So you've been good at the game on that.
Yeah. It's false. Who's taking the bears? Yes. Yes. We're switching.
Yeah. Well, I know, you know, kids are the first person on the beach.
I'm just giving perfect.
Thank you so much.
I got my Yankee one, sir. I got for my birthday last year, so let's go.
Are you a Yankee?
Oh, I'm a baseball fan, first Yankee fan and second, but I've been watching, you know, I watch baseball all day, every day. Yeah, yeah, I love. I think the baseball playoffs made me appreciate living on the west coast because when I was like east coast and central, it was like, oh, wow, man, just staying up. And I was like, ah, you feel, you gotta wait till that, you're sleeping, the game's not going on.
I still have to see the Dodgers. So I'm just sticking with the Astros.
Yeah.
You know, she gets together. Cooper time. So it's better to see.
Oh, oh.
It's an interesting question. Are you cooled?
Yeah.
No.
I'm not the girl that uses the planes of us.
It is always freezing in that building.
Oh, thank you. Just passing the city we could hear. It is night, but it's good.
I'd rather be colder than you.
Yeah. So.
Seems to be what no, from everyone that I asked from others to these and stuff, that seems to be. Although one mayor today was talking, they get six minutes. I was like.
Each.
Yes. What he said. What he said, well, we didn't get an example where it was. Push a group that comes in and like condemns them to hell and they each take a minute.
Hey, look.
I'm like.
Yeah, that's right. I don't want to be bad. There's better use than underneath. Yeah. Able to.
Yeah. Now, if last year, you can bring everybody close together and use all the skirting appropriately, so.
Should have seen it during COVID.
I've seen some of the videos I raised in the office.
What was the fight?
Well, that's where they had the extra table and they were like each one per table.
Eventually, they just went to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. So. Reading the order, please stand in the mic, Slade. I have legislation to.
Of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, take roll. Okay, I know everyone by heart. Mayor Hillary Mepkin here, councillor Gilligan here, councillor Carswell. Councillor Paulson.
Here.
Okay, we are all here. First up on our agenda. Is the appointment of Eric Quillan. Was that how you say your last name?
Quillan.
Quillan. Um, and this was a carryover from a previous meeting, so all the information was not reprinted in the packet. So I just wanted to reiterate real quick what I had shared with Eric on the appointment. This is an appointment to fill the. Um, unexpired term of that was created through. Jim Dreven. Um, and this was something I sent out to council end of August. And part of it just says that the applications before me brought four wide variety of candidates and possibilities. I used the following 10 questions, which was also included in the packet last month for the candidates to get this, to guide our discussion together. One area of focus I had was making sure my selection would represent a large population of the town, but the diverse population. And, and so with that, I put forth. Um, my nomination and so. I laid that before you guys, that nomination of Eric Quon. Let's see.
Is it a good time? You think it's good now? Now that we've taken care of the.
Well, I think especially for this seat, this was a selection that was made prior to. All of that, um, which was partly why I'm referencing that I did email out and made public that my nomination was for Eric prior. Two things, I think that's important for our city to know that a residence that this was an application that came in. Without any of the water rate issues. But for a wider. Range of things that. I do think that especially with multiple openings that for the benefit of the city so that we do have a quorum for something when. Um, I know that I had a few councillors that might not have been able to make it tonight. We wouldn't be able to make, you know, just with this many openings, it takes. Almost like one person, two people, and we don't have a quorum.
We'll all move to accept. The appointment of Eric Quon in the city council. To the expires good term December 31st, 2024, created by Jim's vacancy.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Um, all in favor?
Bye.
Any opposed? Passes now, please welcome to. The council, all right, we'll let, yeah. Oh, just a second. Eric is going to, um. First of all, Jake, you can.
Thank you.
So.
I don't know if you want your papers you brought or we have papers for you back. Eric will be sworn in through either the option of a notary or the next time court is in session. But our charter does give him permission to take a seat immediately. So, um.
He can take the seat. With that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Even without signing it.
Correct, because once it's appointed, appointed, the old, the old kids are gonna just be more of a regulatory function, but.
Did we move into it?
Yeah.
I looked into it too, after the beginning of the year. Um. Yeah, so welcome. I do wanna give Eric the, you can pick wherever you want to sit, so. Um, the permission to know that as a brand new councillor. Um, one, speak up, don't feel like, oh no, I shouldn't have asked that. Ask. We don't expect you to know every process, nor do I yet know every process. And you're more than welcome to abstain if you feel like, hey, I just got on the table and. You know, but you are fully known counsel, so welcome.
Thank you. Um, can I? Do a quick introduction. So my name is Eric Quillan. My family and I have lived here for eight years. And I teach English at Dayton High School. I've been a teacher most of my professional life. And we opened a coffee shop down the street a year ago. So that was a big decision for our family. Kind of, kind of a little bit risky, you know, I kind of, yeah, we can have good coffee. Uh, I'm excited to take this position. Um, I have a very busy life. There's nine people living in my house, grandkids, dogs, cats, but, uh. I'm looking forward to this opportunity because we love this town, really happy that we moved here. We're raising our family here and it's, uh. You know, I just wanna, I wanna see this town prosper and grow, you know, in the right way, how, how we as a community see that, how we envision it. So I'm happy to serve. That's kind of been my role in public, public service has been my job as a teacher. That's what I do. So I'm excited to, to be here and I want to especially thank you, Lee, for, uh, tabling the first motion. Because when I, you know, attending those meetings, stepping up there and having to vote, I. It would have been really awkward and maybe inappropriate. I probably would have abstained.
And for clarity, it's just, you know, I don't think you have seen all of the numbers in the budget.
Yeah, and I haven't. Yeah, so I, thanks for that because that would have put me kind of in a tight spot, you know, but I appreciate it.
Appreciate that too.
Yeah.
So welcome, um.
And lastly, just to let you know, um, you're on boarding process. I'll get with you sometime tomorrow. We'll get your email set up. We have an orientation packet, budget stuff, all that stuff will go over maybe for about an hour, hour and a half or so, once you can come.
Whenever you have time. Um, so with that, um, we do need to declare the vacancies. Created by the resignation of councillor Shaw and Johnson. Um. They were both. Emailed to council. And then our charter states that we need to formally. Acknowledge the vacancy. They've already, the resignation stands no matter what, but we do have to.
So all move to declare vacancy on the city council due to councillor Michael Shaw and Joe Johnson's resignation. Effective the dates on their respective resignation letters.
On second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? This is, okay, um, I do want to quickly just share the same as I did the last time we had. A vacancy declared. Um, this is a little bit of a overlap, but yet not. Um, last time I was very clear in my process and I want to be very clear again, um. My main objective of taking a pause of 30 days to open up the actively seeking applications is I want to make sure that. I have a variety of applications in front of me with as many options as possible. Um, that doesn't mean that my intent to, um, the goal was to declare vacancies last month. And I, um, when I selected a seat for, um, the seat that Eric just, or councillor Quon just. Fill, it wasn't a who would I pick? It was a hard, who would I not pick? Um, and so with that, I know it's a little bit awkward that, um. I did put forth a name that I wanted to nominate, um, but at the same time, I do find that we are in a new situation. It was a new territory where all of a sudden we have two councillors resigning back to back. And another appointment that puts three seats that are getting appointed, which is half the council, and then I break the tie. Because of that, I want to be very careful that. The council seats do not get appointed where it's a hundred, heavy loaded. Um. Just from my viewpoint. So I did speak with councillor Paulson, who is the council president, to ask her to come alongside me. Um, when I start interviewing candidates again. Um, and so that might be that, um, somebody who's already been put forward before. Um, I would like them to also interview with her, even if I'm already comfortable with that, but also I would like to. Reach out to you guys that, um, feel free to share as much as you want of your opinions on how to handle, especially that third seat. I do want to respect the fact that. Um, you guys hold seats, especially the three original councillors tonight hold seats that they were elected for. And, um, I don't take lightly the responsibility that I have to appoint. And I want to respect your seat status the same as respecting the open seats. So, long story short, once again, there'll be a 30 day window that I am actively seeking applications. And, um. Councillor Paulson is going to interview along with me. Um, could be together, could be separate, depending on everyone's schedules. At the same time, if there's anyone you guys want to talk with, you are more than welcome and I encourage you to reach out to those candidates. And. Or applicants, I should say, and we'll go through the same steps and my hope is to appoint or decide what to do with those two vacant seats. At the same time.
And that was just from the resignation date, 30 days.
From today. Although we have had some applications come in, I've contacted letting them know that. Yeah, 30 days from this vacancy, or we just declared vacancy, so.
So Mayor, uh, Maguson, if I may clarify, so we'll get the ads out tomorrow, just like last time.
Uh huh.
Um, as a reminder, since both these positions were just recently elected, um, they, the official term ends on December 31st, 2026. But they will have to run again in the next election to keep the seat.
Yes, the appointment only goes through until the next election, so we actually have an election where there are five.
Yeah, five councils and one mayor.
Seats.
Yes, so since.
So. Um. Citizen input on non-agenda items. Um. I have Tom Reed.
Hello.
Hello.
I want to talk about, talking about the stormwater bases. Which I don't know, I, I, I put together a little thing. I've only got four copies.
Thank you.
It's got a little map to show you where they are. I was here once before, a couple of months ago. The situation is this, when the developers develop the northeast corner. They. Created HOAs. And put the stormwater basin maintenance and ownership onto those HOAs. I think this is part of the sewer system. I don't think an HOA has any business being involved in it whatsoever. I don't know why I pay taxes if it's not for the city to do stuff like this. It's drainage, it's land that's sitting there doing nothing. It's a low area that the water collects in, so it doesn't flood. Not residential, it's not commercial, it's not parks and recreation, it's sewer system. So I'd like the council to consider it and I'd like to have conversations about moving the ownership of these to. City, which will save two HOAs up there $30,000 per year. And by what I can figure out, won't cost the city hardly anything because you've got an umbrella liability policy it goes under. You've got contracts with landscapers already, um, and we can get rid of the HOAs. It's just another level of administration that, um, I guarantee you, nobody up in that area wants. And from talking to the people in the neighborhood, we feel like we're getting double taxed. We pay all the taxes to the city and then we have to take care of part of the infrastructure ourselves. So we just think it's unfair and we'd like to have the city council consider it. So my question to the state council is, what's the next step to talk about it?
Can I ask, go quick, you're, you're saying we, so are you coming before us tonight? As Tom Reed, the homeowner, or are you coming before us? I know that you're on an HOA. Are you speaking? I just wanted to talk.
Yes, yes, yes. I, I was on the HOA to clarify for you, Brandon. I was on the HOA. Thought my time there was done and resigned. But, um, now we have applied to be back on there and have been accepted. The formal meeting to accept that is October the 26th.
Okay.
But to contact, I can give you the person's name at management trust.
So as of tonight, you're coming just as Tom Reed though. I just want to make sure.
Um, well, I, I guess the official staff hasn't put on it. The people have all replied via email saying, yes, we will reinstate Tom. And I was on there before, so we've got the emails of everybody reinstating, um, me. But, you know, really, as, as, as one of the people in the, um, one of the HOAs, I think that's sufficient for me to raise the issue to me.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to know if it.
And I'm not, I'm not asking to make a decision. I'm not acting in the role of making a decision at this point. I, I think we need to have a conversation about these because we're getting dinged. And there's 123 households up there that are screaming and saying, hey, come on. So, you know, they're, they're upset and they want out of this. It's been going on for, in mind for 18 years. And then the ones over on 16th Street for less than that, but. They all, Joe Johnson, and, you know, you guys know Joe, she's the president of the other HOA. And I've spoken with her and she's on board with me that.
And I understand that, you can't speak on her behalf.
Right, no, of course. Absolutely, that's why down the road, when it comes time to do a transaction or something, sure, you're gonna need the board members to be present and whatever. I, I assume all of that, but. Before we get to that, we've got to have agreement that, yes, it makes sense for the city to take ownership. And so I'm trying to find out what the next step is to have that discussion.
Uh, I can't speak for everybody. I'm not, I'm not interested in the city taking ownership of that at this point. It's not something that.
Okay, tell me why. What's the reasoning?
It redistributes costs from an HOA where the expense was originally put before homeowners bought houses and redistributes it to all taxpayers. People bought those houses knowing.
And that is not appropriate for something that's part of the infrastructure.
Well, I mean, you can look at different things, infrastructure too. There, every HOA generally has, it's usually, not always, usually an HOA because they're common land that they can't develop. And that's why they have to. And I think that generally people. At least have the, whether or not they're aware, they have the information to know those things.
I've, I've been in HOAs, I've never had an HOA at land that couldn't be developed, so I don't know.
Right, it's not, this is, you know.
This, this is the discussion, it needs to be had.
I understand that, but that's not what the, the agenda says.
Right, right, I understand that. So can we do something to create a discussion panel or something?
So at this point, and I saw your emails. Uh.
Thank you.
You know, yeah, I appreciate you sending the emails, but like. I just told you my stance on it. That's why I have not asked that to be added to our agenda though. That's just where I'm at.
Um, can I ask how much it is?
Well.
Is this a big deal?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, twenty thousand on our HOA and 10,000 on the one. That's 272 a year.
Average is up to 20 bucks.
Twenty, twenty-five bucks a month for everybody forever to own a stormwater basin.
My stance.
Instead, the city's got all the expertise.
My stance is, um, along the lines with, um, councillor Gilligan. The only difference I would put is if the HOA. Wants to come before council. As an HOA, they can then read.
So you need me to come back in November.
With something saying that the HOA is asking on their behalf to then possibly.
I mean, I'll be, I'll be on board, so.
Usually you'd have like meeting minutes with the board, seeing somebody to represent the HOA.
Okay.
That is something that we could.
Repetitive 26, so.
You know, but as I know that a couple of months ago, you came before council and our directive was to connect with our city admin, which I know that there was some discussion. And that at that time, it was.
Sorry, I'm just gonna have to correct you whenever I, all I asked for was a name at county. I did not ask for Brandon to have the conversations with county with me excluded and never ever.
Okay, but that's his problem, but he did.
Yeah, but let's just strike the record straight. He said he knew somebody at county and that he was gonna give me a name.
And did he?
Eventually, after having a conversation with the guy and making the decision on their own, without me even being able to explain our costs and our position and our thoughts.
Okay, so, um. That means, that means that any further directive to Brandon is the same as where it would have been two months ago. That I would say, hey, is, get, get him that information, he's got that information. The only thing I could see that would change it is as an HOA coming to us possibly.
Yeah, you got the information.
So.
And, and you just need me to be, as a board member. Representative. But that's what it's changed with these things.
I, I mean, just.
I don't, and I can't.
Joe, are you open to listen?
I understand how passionate you are. Trust me, I can hear it, like 20 bucks, you know.
It's $30,000 a year. These people are coughing up, which would cost the city maybe a grand.
So I'm gonna, we're going in circles and for respect.
Okay, so, so I'm hearing, I'm, I'm hearing no. I'm hearing no. Okay, so I'm gonna say it. I got 123 households that got voting people in them.
Fantastic.
Okay, we're gonna go to democracy. I kind of expected this. I gotta say, I'm disappointed.
We are done with.
I, I just gotta say.
Tom, your time is done. Thank you for coming.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any other citizen input?
No, no, I just.
Okay. Christine, were you?
No.
Okay, I didn't tell you, please. Okay, um, next up, additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I actually completely forgot, uh, but under 12, uh, F. I'd like to at least address the sewer rate study from OAWU.
Um, and I, I knew you were gonna ask that and I would actually like to broaden that topic to discuss a little bit more about just OAWU. And. For, for the context, since we just came off the, not that it's a big water rate study question, I just have a question that would follow my journey.
I would like to remove the code enforcement discussion primarily because the sheet we were given has absolutely zero direction on the discussion points. And there was no way for us to prepare for that discussion.
Um, I would like to leave it, the purpose was for us to start it as a quick conversation, just a.
The purpose is fine, but I didn't have a chance to look at it beforehand, so I don't feel like anybody here is going to be equipped to have a meaningful conversation. So I would like to remove it, put it back on next month with a little more context.
Um, I think if we leave it, I will give me time during that to explain to you that there was no decisions.
Anybody else's opinions?
We bumped it. Just.
I just want to point out that it was supposed to be on last month and already done, so, and I'm putting it on because.
And it's fine that it's, you can say that it's supposed to be somewhere, but if you don't give the councillors any context for which to prepare it, it's not a fair discussion.
The context was to bring it forth to see what areas.
Tell me the context now. I don't have time to prepare for it now.
Okay.
So that's, that's why I would like to remove it.
Okay, so I am, I will respect the fact that that wants to be removed. Um, Brandon, I will send to you the verbiage that I would like somehow to at least be considered. I am the one that asked to have it put on on behalf of multiple citizens, so I don't want to drop it. Um, my apologies if it came off that way. The whole point was to keep it very broad. So, um. I will rephrase that. And work with Brandon to make sure that that is worded correctly, um, to be put on next month. Are you guys okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So any other? So, anyway, so, um. 12F, Eric. Would be the sewer rate. We'll add that to 12F. Sorry, I wasn't very clear so that you know where to. When we add something, we, it'll be an action item. And we are taking off 13A. Okay, any other additions or deletions? And? Um, report from Lafayette Fire, two.
Good evening. Um, so last month, um, we had a field boot event. That ended up getting canceled last second, um, unfortunately, uh, due to some unforeseen, uh, circumstances, we had to cancel that. And the plan now is to hopefully do it in the spring sometime. Uh, the. Volunteers are currently working on the schedule of events for December, um, as far as our Christmas banquet or. Um. You know, whether we're gonna do the light parade and all of that stuff again, um. Let's see. Uh, we're still having issues with our current brush rig. Um, we've got. Um, constantly troubleshooting something different on it. Um, right now, we're having issues with the, the pump starting, so, uh, and batteries dying on us constantly, so. Uh, our fall academy starts October 14th. It runs every other weekend, um, with the live burn. And the last day being, uh, the weekend of December 3rd. Uh, we have two volunteers that will be attending that academy. Um, and then several of our other volunteers will be going as, uh, chandray to help teach. Um. We're doing a promotion process for lieutenants on November 1st. Uh, we've had. About 200 hours of combined time of, of training between everyone. Uh. There's a typo on here. I, I have 22. It's actually 24 personnel on the roster. Five nights, uh, that were staffed. Uh, we had three new. Uh, we had three new personnel that have joined the department and last night at our meeting, we had two new people that came in that live in. In the city that would like to join as well. Uh, and for the month, we had sixty calls. That's all I have.
The blackout part, is that addresses?
That is addresses, yes.
Is there anything in the reports that show like the timestamp of when these calls come in?
When they come in?
Yeah. I I just was, I noticed that there's eighteen calls that was unable and I'm just curious if there's.
So I looked at that because I did notice that there were eighteen. Um, two of those calls were entered wrong. They were actually staffed. Um, they were canceled en route. Um, so with the sixteen remaining calls, seven of them were to mutual aid partners. Um, that we were not able to staff due to the fact that, um, but when we had days daytime staff there. Uh, we didn't have someone else to come in. We require a certain amount to go to our our neighbors, um. The rest of them, they were uh, going uh. After hours or whatever those calls, um, it was just, we didn't have the the volunteers to be able to staff it, um. The remaining nine, uh, six were on weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. Here's our on, um, and then the remaining after that were all. Um, during the week that were also times that we did not have our uh, staff on. Um, the volunteers, you know, they're they're volunteers, so, um. I understand and I won't fault them for not being able to make calls. However, I will say that those calls, just because they say that they're unfilled, does not mean that they are completely unfilled. Usually there is someone that is going to it, whether it be one of our mutual aid partners or if it's um. A medical call or always having McMinville ambulance because they own, they have the ASA with us. They're the ones that are responsible for that ambulance service for us.
Also, I'm just curious, blackout was the addresses?
Yeah, I I blacked out the addresses. Um, we've, I I can redo this report to make it look something different so that there's not blackout sections on there, but. I um, truly feel that not every, although this is all public record. Um, I don't feel like it needs to be out there for everyone.
Yeah, yeah, I was just.
Okay, so we just wanna make sure.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure what that was, that was blocked out.
Okay. No, no need to change it.
All right.
Okay. Oh, Sheriff, I know that. Uh, Sheriff Morrison is on vacation, correct?
Yeah, he's on, he actually emailed me from a cruise that he forgot that day. Um, and with me being um, away as well, we couldn't get any representation, but he'll go over the net in the last two months. Um, Morrissey just started last month and he's been pretty active, especially in the daytime. I probably see them. Six, seven people in the morning just pulling people over for speeding, so I know there's some activity with him recently, so, um. Yeah.
Um, import, run on public works.
Great. Well, I have your public, the public works report is here, um, but I did wanna introduce Chad Snyder, our new public works director. Um, Chad will be the one uh, doing the report monthly from here on out. Um, he started last week. Um, he's been. Kicking going, uh, we had a, we had a transition meeting today with Mark, the previous uh, system supervisor on some items. Uh, a lot of things that we're seeing over the past week, week and a half that we need to work on and we'll be going through those processes here. Um, so, um, some of this stuff on the the public works report is kind of redundant to what we, uh, what I discussed later on. In my administrative report for the water and billing uses update, but um, if there's anything else, you had any questions on, I can answer for you.
I have questions.
Yeah.
Welcome, Chad.
Thank you. The thirty-four leaks on the homeowner side, are those uh, concentrated in particular neighborhoods?
Yes, um, like I had mentioned, I think in my uh, last month's report, um, there was a good chunk of those that were gonna be in this.
Yeah, I figure these had additional checks in them.
Yeah, 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 these have, these are a lot of additional.
We're seeing the same concentration.
So there was, um, we, after coming out of the last meeting, um, we did another check, I think it was on Jefferson. And there's one more that you and I have kind of been looking on that I'm trying to work through. Um, that's the hardest one. I think everything else has kind of been, um. Uh, mitigated to least, um, if there were leaks, some of them were small and. Just as a reminder, if you do catch a leak on your property and you bring that uh, that bill in, we we get credits based on. Uh, what type of leak, who fixed it, you know, how much water used, so.
Since, um, Chad's.
Can I clarify, Brandon?
Yeah.
The credits, that also depends on whether it falls on the city or the homeowner, correct?
Correct, correct. It's all, it's all, it'll all be homeowner side uh, repairs, repair credits.
Okay.
Um, can I ask that we put the month prior's numbers next to the current numbers?
Okay.
Uh, just there's room on the paper and I I found myself going back and looking at what last month's were, if it's not too big of a. Deal, just to help give a little bit more context what those numbers are. So, anyway, welcome, Chad. Ready yourself at home. And we look forward to. Seeing what you can add to the report. Okay, um, approval of minutes, we have three different sets, so let's. The first one was revisions to July thirteenth, council meeting.
Um. If I recall correctly, uh, Meta Mayor, this, the July just had one of the, um. The tie breaking vote, which I think, uh, you mentioned to go ahead and make sure that was not dated. And then I think Counselor Gilligan had mentioned something about, um, the.
Changes in there, it looks good.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and the last thing that I had that saw on there, it's not a huge deal to me, but it was the directive to. Reach out to the people that weren't there for the grants that we never asked for that to be re-stated was. That that was, they're welcome to come back, but and that was supposed to be changed, but wasn't, but that's not a big enough thing to stop from approving. So, um, Eric, what we do right now is if someone wants to do motion to accept. Unless you guys wanna do them all at once.
I like that idea.
I am going to move to accept the July twenty twenty-three council meeting minutes. With the revisions, the August tenth council minutes and the September fourteenth council minutes.
A second.
Own the favor?
Hi.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on. Um. An inspired build. Brandon, I will move that to you then.
Just thinking Meta Mayor and we have chief here, if they have any questions, but uh, as part of the capital improvement plan for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. It included a new fire rescue vehicle for the department. Well, uh, I think two or three meetings, three meetings ago was approved for the chassis. And that's ready to go. Now this bid was for our build out and you see the three bids that we received with the lowest being Cascade Fire Equipment. Uh, one hundred nineteen thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars. Um, according to chief, if I'm wrong, they would deliver the, um, everything to the. To the vendor, correct? And we're not gonna, we're out of that now, correct?
The, what?
They're bringing the bill, they're bringing everything to, we don't have to charge them like how we had to pay the five hundred dollars if we didn't go through them. It's gonna be.
Yeah, it'll be sent to.
Yes.
Exactly to the film.
Yes. So with that, so with the hundred, if if the, if approved, the hundred and nineteen three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. And the, um, the chassis, we would still be at about twenty thousand dollars, so there would be some savings. From the projected expenditure of two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. It'll probably be another, uh, another couple of grand just to do the final finishing. Painting and branding.
Yeah. Can I ask real quick, chief, the, I mean, there's a big difference in prices, but the difference between like the one forty-four and the one nineteen is not. If, I wanna make sure whenever I'm looking at the lowest amount that we're not cutting corners just to get as low as possible. Right?
Um. We actually had Cascade has built, uh, sorry Cascade fire equipment, built several of the apparatus around the area. And they've done a good job, um. You know, we had a good rapport on the, you know, as far as talking with the salesman and getting this stuff taken care of. They're, they're really on top of it. Um, we've had one built over in Carlton, um. And anytime we've had any issues with it or anything, they're super responsive to being able to take care of whatever the little issue would be. Um, you know, we have small, small things that were just, you know, needed to be touched up, but overall, they're good.
I had a question for you, chief, but will the build out, I don't know if you know or Brandon, will it be ready for the next fire season or, you know, when it'll be online?
Uh, with Cascade, um, fire equipment, yes, it will be, uh. They have us on the books to start on May, if we're able to get the chassis over to Alstair, um. That's great. I've asked for these guys to make sure that, you know, I'm trying to figure out how, when, when we can get them on the books.
Yeah.
So I've asked these one of these, when they can get started. Everyone else. Um, couldn't do it until next year, next budget, so I asked these guys, they said they could do it now, so I asked that they. Put us on there just in case as a placeholder.
Right.
So we're placeholder there, the others, we're gonna have to. With the next budget cycle, so then we would not get it until probably the next fall.
How long could we expect that vehicle to be like functioning and doing itself? Cause it sounds like it'll solve a lot of your problems with the batteries, obviously, like it's ten years or.
So, um. Most of the time, uh, we, they're twenty years is what we're kind of running on, like the one that we currently have is twenty-five years old and it's. You know, it's like any vehicle though, you know, the older it gets, the more problems you have with them, um. Granted, these don't go out a lot. They don't have a lot of mileage on them, but they do get driven pretty hard when they do get driven, um, and used. Pretty hard when they do get used, so.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to.
Can I continue this discussion here? I think that last month we went through, uh, heavy financial review, a lot of us did. Make sure that we were making ends meet with the city and I hope that opened folks' eyes to the financial situation we're in. And I I don't think it's responsible to spend six figures on this right now. I understand that there's different accounts. The money comes from different budgeted places. But our spending has been very lax over the last few years and I do not see how we justify spending this, especially when later in this agenda. We're looking to approve a supplemental judge or a supplemental budget that uh, reduces the city's revenue by almost a quarter million dollars. So I remain completely opposed to spending.
I had a, Brandon, you mentioned that this, the vehicle has revenue, uh, generating possibilities.
Correct. On conflict, only if we send it outside of the city, not even to service our city.
I, I, I think that this is, that it is a hefty price tag. But I was, because it is something that sits in that's a fund specifically for this, um.
Because we approved the budget for to be, like, we put the fund there. It's not like the money is just there. We put the money there in the budget. So we we can't say the money's already there. We did.
My, my understanding is that that money was to be spent on vehicles.
Not under, under the budget we approved.
So if we're gonna buy one, the sooner the better. I mean.
We've already. I, I think it's.
I, I think it's better to get our finances in order before we continue to make six-figure purchases.
We.
We already bought the chassis that said, that was the seventy.
Yeah.
Seven thousand purchase, that's already purchased.
Yeah. Um, I will open it before we get to motioning to, um. Citizen or public input, um, Christine, would you wanna?
It's just funny, like, in a pack, the vehicle didn't have a rescue. The one we have now becomes unusable and we only have the two engines, let's see.
So if we only have the two engines, we have people that have the ability to, are able to drive. Um. Certain vehicles, so they can drive the rescue, the the smaller brush rig, they can actually take that and go on calls. They're not allowed to drive the big apparatus. Until we go through certain processes and have the ability to drive them. Um, we have a lot more people that are able to take that, um. So therefore we're not taking the engines for everything. Um, also, you know, the engines are a lot more expensive to take out. They're bigger, they use more fuel. Um. There's, you know, a lot more wear and tear on try, on the roads using the bigger vehicles where the smaller ones, you know. We're able to get in and out of places a little bit better and, um, you know, it's a lot more user friendly for us.
So reduce our volunteer availability. Not have it, I'm responding.
Our volunteers using it regularly right now, our fresh vehicle, given all the mechanical issues you just listed?
They have been using it, um, because that's what we have and, um. For us, it's better that it goes out, especially here in town. It hasn't really left town for anything, um, it's here. Um, and if that is the case, you know, we have the ability to go get it or whatever, but, um. So far, we haven't had any major issues upon a call. It seems, once we get it started and going, it's going. It's just that. At night when it sits overnight and it's got a low draw somewhere, that's where we have an issue.
And what's the cost to fix the starter, the switches and the battery?
Uh, I'm not sure what the overall cost is. We keep taking it into our, um, mechanic to have them work on it. Uh, it's just been a constant, we're going over again, so.
Is the vehicle, uh, that we've already purchased, the new one, is is it a usable vehicle without the build out? Or is it just, would it just be sitting there waiting to be?
Just be sitting there.
Until we decided, if you decided to do it later, it wouldn't be serviceable or usable.
Or, or we could declare for the city to resell it and recoup the money that we spent on it.
Um, yes.
Well, I'm here fourteen one in a row, uh, just listening to the conversation. Personal opinion would be, yes, it's a large chunk of change. Sounds like there's some budget issues you guys need to talk about, discuss. But at the same time, you've already spent and sunk a certain amount of money on this. It's okay to let that go. That's one, that's one, of course, there's no harm and no problem with doing that. But. You've got part of it cost, it sounds like you've got it budgeted, you could still resolve a budget issue down the road. But now you have to look at. What's the practicality of not buying it or not going ahead because our department has a rig that is usable. Under a limited basis, but. And when I say it puts, it puts the city at risk, it puts the city at risk of nickel and diming when it comes to costs. You know, sometimes it's better to go, okay, yeah, it's a new vehicle. But it's got a twenty-five year lifespan. Yes, it's expensive. But guess what, folks? If you wait three years, it's only gonna be more expensive. So I would say. Yeah, I'm all for saving cash, but there's a point in time where saving cash is not a good thing. And at the same time, I would strongly encourage whatever concerns Lee has. Lee, by all means, work with the councils, bring up the issues for us, come out with a budget. Fix if you were, or adjustment that is actually going to work, that's going to support the capital equipment.
So here's what I'll say, whether it's more expensive or not in three years is based on price tag, not based on the city's financial situation. Given the city's financial situation right now, I think that it's very expensive right now. Secondly, we can fix budgets all we want, but what we need to fix is just the insanely lax spending that is occurring. And fix a budget, you can, you manipulate numbers on paper all you want. We need to stop being so lax as many factors. That's, that's the heart of the issue. I agree. And I, I thought it hit hard for a lot of people last month.
It did. I think, I think what you're saying about we need, you know, that there's still costs that need to be. Um, I mean, anyone would love to, like, their home budget's be zero dollars a month, but there's the cost that's. Whether you have to tighten your budget or not, and I think that perhaps. The budget committee needs to reconvene in a larger thing, but that this was a purchase that we had already started. Um, I can't tell council how to move forward tonight, but I think the discussion has already have been had. That we understand your, your view that you want to curb all spending.
I do not, I never said, don't put words in my mouth. I did not say curb all spending, but we need to be more responsible. We're dealing with taxpayer money. We can't just spend on everything that's put in front of us and that seems to be what's happening.
Okay, so, uh, that, that's incentive. So I guess right now it. Okay, so, uh, that, that's incentive. So I guess right now it's, and that motion can be made or? No motion, but I think the discussion part is going in circles.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Cascade Fire Equipment for one hundred nineteen thousand three fifty-five.
I'm going to second.
Okay, I hear, um, to accept the bid of one hundred nineteen dollars two hundred fifty-five from Cascade Fire Equipment. I'm assume, um, it wasn't stated, but through the fire brush truck. And authorize the city administrator to sign and register the contract. Um, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Okay, this is three to one. Next up is, this new resolution for designated checks signing. Okay, um, Brandon. Any statement you need to make to us?
No, um, so with, um, Kevin Perkins leaving, um, leaving his, uh, separating from work here, uh, we need somebody else who doesn't have access to the city finance programs, who issues checks, et cetera. Um, so right now here at City Hall, um, it would be myself and Robert, who would be those two individuals who don't have access to that. So, um, Robert would be the backup person replacing Kevin, uh, regarding check signing abilities.
Can I clarify? You said it needs to be somebody who doesn't have access?
Correct.
That's your recommendation?
Well, it's somebody who's, who's not in the systems. So, um, and we've talked about using Chad, but Chad just started, so the next. Um, so yeah, um, the goal, I think, eventually, once we get to Kevin's position filled, however that looks when that happens. Um, or when Chad, uh, is successfully hit, passed probation period, um, it could be changed. But, um, Robert is the only person here besides.
So Robert's the only other staff member that doesn't?
I would recommend, yes.
Okay. Recommendation aside.
Yeah.
Are there other employees? I'm, I just wanna know who our choices are.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think public work should have to come in to sign checks when they, when it's time. Robert's here, he knows, he knows the city, you know, he knows how to look for, but, um, it's completely up to you all.
I will move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Um, action item twelve C, resolution for water rates. Oh wait, did I have to? Did I have to read that out since it was a resolution?
Yes, ju- just the, the key heading, the.
So we have to re-revote on that?
Correct.
Wouldn't be really, okay, so. Motion's still live, but, um, before the city of Lafayette, Oregon. Um, a resolution design name signees for checks, city checks, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight. All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
All opposed? Now it has. Sorry about that. Okay, now I have another resolution, so we're gonna have to do it the same way. Um, amending water utility rates. Brandon, anything you wanna share?
Just thinking Meta Mayor, yeah, this is just memorializing as per the motion, um, at the last, uh, the meeting at the fire station. Um, reducing the rate to the previous rate, uh, from all the twenty, the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three rate, as well as adding the MAC water line surcharge and system maintenance surcharge. Those financial impacts are there, um, and all of the items requested are in the resolutions twenty twenty-three oh nine.
I have a question for council to make sure, are, are you guys okay with the verbiage that says, whereas members of the city can't hold a town hall?
Yes.
My concern is that that makes it appear that the, that the group of city councillors held it where everything was by invitation of councillor Paulson and I. And I don't want to put into a resolution something that down the road, someone can read it that the council as a whole held a town hall.
This was the first.
Actually, I'm actually okay. It doesn't say all the members.
Okay, I just, I wanted to respect those that weren't, that it's, it was more for your guys's.
I, I think if someone were to read it to me, the entire council, they would read the city council.
Okay. Okay.
So I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, amending water utility rates for the city of Lafayette.
A second.
I have before me, um, before the city council, for the city of Lafayette, Oregon, a resolution amending the water utility rates for the city of Lafayette, Oregon, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero nine. All in favor? All of them, okay, all opposed? Passing unanimously.
Can I just add something?
Yes.
The loan repayment fee. Uh, I'm totally in support of this, but I would, I would like to say that I don't think it is equitable. I think it's very necessary, but I, I just don't think it's. The, the lowest water user in the city of Lafayette pays the same amount as the highest.
So just, you know. So just from my viewpoint, cause I had this discussion with citizens, and I think that there's way like, this is equitable or not. And it depends on if you look at that fee to pay for water usage or for debt service. And if it's debt service, the debt is split equally upon everybody. If it's water usage, you're still being charged by your usage. So I think there's two ways to look at it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
I think as we were.
It's important to note that, it's important to note that with our contract with Wa- McMinville Water and Light, after the city uses so much ga- so many gallons of water, the rates increase. And so that's where I think councillor Gilligan is getting at. It depends on how you're looking at this. And really with the usage, it, it does come out fair because the costs go up for us.
That the loan is there whether we turn the pipe on or not.
Correct. Go over, thirty miles, have water increases.
Okay.
I, so I totally, I totally want to appreciate you sharing that coming on, you know, you're, you're picking up the tail end of what's not a closed topic.
Yeah.
And, um, I've had lots of conversations like we did with other people. And I think the biggest thing for me was, it is equitable in respect that it has nothing to do with usage.
Right, it's in the start.
And, and people, I don't think people realize this, the old tiers that we went back to, they were still tiers.
Yeah.
They just weren't as punitive on the higher end. So people are still paying higher tiers for higher usage, that part. So the equitable part, I think, is still there for usage, just on small stuff.
Yeah, well, it's tiered, so.
Yeah.
That's why we.
I've talked to many people and they are a-okay with this change.
Not that anyone wants, so you know, no one's purposely going, oh, yes.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
Um, okay, twelve D resolution two zero two three dash ten supplemental budget. Brandon?
Thank you, Meta Mayor. So this is just similar to the resolution, this actually shows, um, where we are adjusting the, uh, the projected revenue. Uh, we also took out the, um, contingency fee. We added the water debt surcharge and the water maintenance surcharge, obviously, still in black in the supplemental budget of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So everything changed, was gonna be in. You see the, the reduction of utility bill collections, um, the addition of the water debt surcharge and the water maintenance surcharge there, all in black and bold. So this will reduce our planned expenditures from four point six four, four-ish million to, uh, four point three nine four million.
Okay, um, council discussion?
I just want to encourage that we meet with the budget committee soon. I mean, we need, we need to adopt this, this, we need to fix, the budget needs to be fixed. We need to adopt this, but I, I think it would be prudent to call it, but I know that historically, the budget committee meets in April. I think it would be good to meet more frequently, especially given the current circumstance.
That's gonna be coming up on the next agenda, make a date.
I would agree.
I agree that this needs to get taken care of, but we can't just, since I got taken care of, just ignore it again. That coming.
But I think councillor Gilligan's correct, like, we need to have a meeting sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. I agree. Um, so council is, is picking a date next month?
Let's, let's.
Okay.
I'm going to, uh, move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Yeah, also.
And then the water fund in the fiscal twenty twenty-four budget, just to be clear.
Sorry, say that again?
I was just including the rest of the language because I wanted to specify that it's in regards to amending the water fund in the fiscal twenty twenty-four budget.
Yes, yeah, but yes, okay, so, that was the second. Um, before the city council for the city of Lafayette, Oregon, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget and changing appropriations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year resolution two zero two three dash one zero. All in favor?
Hi.
All of those? Passing unanimously. Um, follow up from that discussion though, is there any directive that is next month picking a date soon enough? To set a budget meeting or do you guys wanna try this?
Also give you time to figure out when we can all get together because then I'm gonna.
We don't, we don't have to set that budget meeting in a council meeting.
No.
Can we just send you our availability and start getting something on the map?
Yeah.
Yes.
Might I suggest, when it comes to setting follow-on meetings, might I suggest and to look at the calendar determined perhaps three times during the year that works out for not only the council. You might want to actually be with them.
Yes.
You do need with them.
We're all part of it. So, so I think for now, just, I think you make a great point.
Pick three, pick three times.
Yeah, so I think you made a great point. I think for now, we're just trying to get it on the calendar this year, and then we'll start figuring out what times we can meet and share it multiple times.
And I think what we're getting at is we don't need to wait till next month or be on the agenda to start sending Brandon our dates. So, um.
Start them just as people who are available.
Yeah, let's all try to send Brandon like an handful of dates, cause I'm sure if we all send him one, none of them are.
I will make, I will yield just for you guys as much as possible. I know for some of you, it's harder, it's a priority. But yeah, even if that's a council, we can pick two that we send to budget committee. I want them there as much as, as they're even more to me, part of the budget. Okay, um, the last action item is D A R C appointment. That is the downtown. What, downtown?
Review and award committee.
Sorry.
My, my position on this is that we wait until we have a full council. I can't speak for the other counselors, but I don't have the availability. And so I think it'd be appropriate to hold off until we get some more of the seats filled.
So I lean that way, except for, I wanna know, how, how many people are on this committee again?
So we have five technically, but while right now we only have three.
So we have, we have a planning commissioner, we have a counselor, and then we have three at large.
Yeah.
We already had, um, we just appointed Travis Johnson.
We have Becky Shaver.
As chair, we already had an opening, Shaw resigned, and that's what we're talking about, that we were supposed to put.
How frequently, like?
They have one meeting.
They do have one. Okay, so here's, I will volunteer to temporarily. My calendar is very.
That's, I was gonna offer to temporarily.
I will volunteer to temporarily serve, but once we fill the council, I would like to revisit this. And I, it's not that I don't want to, it's, I'm.
I think. I wanna, I, I fully support that because I know that, but you are very responsible with expenditures. Um, if, if you want to also know that I am willing to temporarily do it.
I'm, I'm happy to jump in. In front of us for now, there might be some.
Yeah, and yeah, I think we're looking at it in the daytime, so if you wanna make it work around your schedule since you're the councilor on it.
Yeah.
I'll get with you on some.
Yeah, same. I appreciate you stepping up to that because I know that they put on hold a meeting they were gonna have, hoping that a councillor.
But I would like to revisit this one.
Absolutely.
So there might be someone better qualified to be appointed, let's just make sure we revisit this.
So I'd like in the motion to make sure it's temporarily stated.
Just saying, can I move to temporarily appoint councillor Gilligan for the downtown design and award review committee for the unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one two thousand twenty-five?
I can just resign from that.
Yeah.
So it's not a big deal.
Oh, I can just.
So, but we will put it back, yeah. Would you like, oh, sorry, we have a motion, so I have a question follow-up for you after, but, um, any second.
I second.
Okay, I have before me a motion to appoint councillor Gilligan to the downtown design and award review committee for the unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one two thousand twenty-five.
And I got you at the second, right before Kalos.
Okay, perfect. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Oh, okay, all opposed? Okay, that's it. Lee Quincy, question for you, as I'm interviewing candidates, is it something important enough to you that I ask them their desire if they want to sit on it or not, or is it just something we?
I know, I think that's all.
Okay.
Here will determine who the best.
Perfect.
And to service and we'll figure it out.
Okay, that's why I respect the fact that you.
No, I, I definitely appreciate that.
Okay, um, discussion items, so we're moving straight to B, short-term rental survey results. Um, I am gonna pause for a few moments. We'll pretend this is a break.
Did you put a nap in there?
Pause? Oh, thank you. Okay, so we'll pretend it's not a break because by time I say it, it'll be up. Thank you for catching that. I had it on the side instead of underwear, normally read it. Okay, we're stepping back to action items twelve S. Twelve F sewer rate for O A W U and just O A W U in general. So, Brandon, since we have nothing in front of us.
Yes, so I did wanna add this on the agenda because I know it's very, it's meeting, it was an official vote. Even though it was under the administrator's, uh, expenditure, spending authority. But I think with everything going on, and I, I spoke to every council just about this, to holding off on this. But since it was a council action, I would like a council vote to hold off on that, if that's where you choose to go.
Did you speak with Eric?
No.
Okay, I just didn't know if we needed to update it.
This is, this is the sewer rate study by the same people.
Yes.
So, may I?
Yes.
Okay, so we had a water rate study. We adopted the recommendations of the water rate study. I think you know what happened. We had a sewer rate study scheduled to be done by the same consultant. I think we wanna put that on pause for now until we figure out if that's really who we want to use, given our recent events. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So you just need a directive, right? It's not.
Yeah, I can't go above because you made a direction for me to, for, for staff, so I just need another vote.
We vote, did we vote on it or was it just a directive?
I think we voted.
Yeah, January's meeting.
Okay, we should vote that.
Yes.
Okay, um, my question, real quick, with that, is there any follow-up that needs to happen? Or part of the plan with O A W U about the original study?
Yeah, so then we're gonna come back after a year.
Yeah.
When the, when the rates were, and to do another rate, rate analysis, um, I pretty much had conversations with him and told him that's probably not gonna be warranted. Just because we didn't, we didn't enact their rates and he would just be doing more work. And it's probably gonna come to a conclusion where may not be favorable to the community, because it's gonna come back with doing the exact same thing again. So I, I discussed that with him and told him it's probably not the best to, to do that, um.
So when we, all the discussions we had, was it council's decision that we stood by those rates, we were just taking, or the report we just were choosing to?
Accept it.
To accept it but not use it, or did we as a council feel that it was?
I did not stand by the, by.
I didn't stand by them either.
Incorrectly.
Did we pay for the rate update already?
So, I hate to say this.
Yes.
But it was money that was wasted, at, at least in this, from what the context of what it was, so.
I'm not gonna say it's wasted.
Yeah.
We got to a point where we can service the debt. We got there, it was just a very tumultuous ride. So I'm not gonna say it was wasted, we got where we needed to be. We probably could have just done it differently.
Yeah.
We did, we did, we spent money, we ended up where we needed to be, servicing the debt and everything. We just.
So I just wanted to find out if council felt there was further discussions as we're having the discussion of, the other study that needed to happen coming out of last month.
I think, I think the sewer rate study needs to be put on hold, and I think we need to address that in the budget meeting.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. So. We do need to motion.
So I'm gonna try to make a motion.
Okay.
I am going to move to table, the sewer rate study. Do I got nothing else? Is that it?
Yeah. I'll second.
With O A W.
With O A W, thank you.
Okay, I have on the table a motion to table the sewer rate study with O A W U. All in favor? Any opposed, passing unanimous, okay?
Now, we didn't pay for that way to study.
No, but we're actually getting ready to start it literally when.
There's no money already.
I, I think it was supposed to start like later this month.
Yeah, we were going through data processes, literally the week, the, literally the week.
Okay. Now on to discussion item, short term rental survey results.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so in your packet is the ten survey questions we asked coming out of, I think it was, uh, May or June's meeting about surveying the community to see if there was an appetite for, uh, short term rentals inside the city of Lafayette. Uh, we did both English and Spanish, we got about a hundred and twenty five, a hundred and twentyish, a hundred and twelve respondents via the English survey and we had two in the Spanish survey. Um, so we did make it multilingual, we promoted it throughout, um, the newspaper, online, the app. Um, uh, at numerous council meetings, discussions in the community, um, and in front of you are those answers, um. The only open ended questions were ten, which is where I probably would focus on. That's where some of the, um, positive or negative comments against or are, are gonna be there, um, but.
See, I was wondering why you combined, would you support the city allowing and regulating use of S T Rs inside city limits and not just, would you, uh, support the city allowing?
Question for it.
Yeah, and then would you, uh, want the city to regulate a separate question?
I see why it was grouped together though, because if we're allowing it, the city has to regulate some of it.
Well, we can allow, we can, it's allowed right now, right? There's no regulations against it or.
Well, it's, we can't, we, we can't tell them, we can't help them out operate, so I mean, it's allowed, but there's nothing we can really do about it.
So I guess the question's asking if we regulate it, it's in a way of allowing. Or what are we doing? I get what you're saying. I think it was just the verbiage, but I don't think it.
I, there was a comment in here and I am not about to try to find it without, I just realized I'm small, this is on paper. So there was a comment in here about, um, the difference between kind of regulating for the sake of regulating or approaching the topic when there's a need for it and I don't think there's a need for us to do anything on this right now, if, if it becomes troublesome, maybe we revisit it next year, but I, I don't think there's a need, A, to broadcast, hey, we're gonna start opening this up for everybody. There were some really legitimate concerns about street parking, which is already an issue in parts of the city. About how many there's going to be, what the zoning to be like, cost of for housing, all kinds of legitimate concerns, also legitimate arguments for. But I just, I don't think we're at a point where this needs to be acted upon. That, that's my.
Yeah, I think.
Happy to hear what everybody else has been.
There's a few that talk about it, but I think you're talking about regulations are easier to add later when something becomes an issue.
Yeah, there's something.
Regulating, controlling without just cause can do more harm than good.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple comments in there, but yeah, I mean, I just, I don't think this is something that's like, we really need to take care of this right now. And I think it would be easier to tackle this if it blossoms as something that's like, okay, this is, this is something we need to take care of, because if we just proactively put something in place. And a year later we find out, what we knew this was coming, we would have done this differently. I just, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to act on it at this point in time. That's, but I do think we should continue to revisit it as the circumstances change.
I appreciate that the survey was done. Um, it's because of the statements that people gave or the way people answer questions, it showed a little bit of, uh, not a pattern, but like you were mentioning, the overregulating for the sake of regulating the parking. Um, but I think that that all leads to that, like councillor Gilligan was saying that we don't need to do anything right now. And that actually just tells us that we don't.
I, I, I also, and I, I know there was some, I, I just wanna reiterate because I think everybody on this council is pretty committed to making sure Third Street continues to progress. There was some talking here about adding to the businesses in town, I, I get the argument, but Airbnb is a wine country. I don't think Lafayette's the plan stop yet. I think people are adding to Dundee and Carlton and McMinnville and eventually we might get there, I just don't think we're there right now.
Yeah, and I get that regulating it, we could get a little bit of income from it, from, you know, the hotel taxing or whatever, but um, as one comment has stated, like, just cuz you can doesn't mean.
You should.
You should.
After the atmosphere of the last meeting, more regulation doesn't seem like, uh, really.
I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate your.
I would, I would sit down and say, just as a person out in the community, that not regulating right now gives you flexibility. Because if problems arise, then you can tailor the regulation to the need.
I'm doing.
Oh, we're going to do these fourteen different regulations and everybody's going, err, I don't want that. But if you have a problem and you have a tailored solution, then all of a sudden, wait a minute. That kind of so, you know, the solution, all of a sudden it goes more powerful and more likely to be both accepted and wanted.
I think this is great, it brought it to the surface for us to remember that be acutely aware of it so that, you know, with that right now, there's not a.
And thanks for doing that survey, I, if, if we do revisit it later, I would love to see, uh, more people respond. I know you can't force people to respond.
I would actually say this is a great survey. So we've done surveys in the past and this is actually pretty good turnout for us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brandon, you have a question?
Yeah, yes.
Do you think that it's possible that because we're not regulating it, we haven't seen interest in it?
Yes.
Okay, so I, it, it's my position, I think that this is a discussion that definitely should be continuing and we should be exploring that. And I agree with the results from this study such as the parking issue, but those are things that we could start exploring. And trying to bring that stuff into Lafayette because it's gonna help Lafayette grow.
So you're, you're saying that that you can see there's ways that if we do it correctly, very loosely regulating or publicist that we can actually.
Start advertising.
The positive parts of it without squashing the negative stuff.
I, I just think there's a lot of people here who don't want it here. Um, based on. Based, I, I get, I get that and I think that tourists would love it here, but I think that there's a lot of people who live here who don't want strangers coming in and out of the house next door every day. I, I think there's people here who don't want extra cars who are unfamiliar with the roads that are already a little dangerous out here after whatever they were doing.
Or how hard it is to find homes that.
Well, I also don't think that we should be regulating what a homeowner does with their house if they wanna rent it out on Airbnb, that should be their choice.
And I agree that, and I think people already are in town. I think if anybody jumps on Airbnb right now, they probably find a couple in Lafayette. But, but my, my, I think my biggest issue, which I don't think I've stated yet, is that our law enforcement presence here is a very limited hour, so stuff that comes up with parking, with noise complaints, with anything that could come with this territory. We're not really properly prepared for whatever those unknowns are. Uh, until we have a little bit better, and better is the wrong word, our law enforcement folks are fantastic. They're just not here all the time. We pay for a limited hour.
If there's an actually, actual complaints about Airbnb being operating town or or, I mean, are there concerns that have been brought forward that, that brought all this stuff?
Yes. Yeah, we received a phone call which kind of initiated the process and then I started doing some, uh, surveying with my peers across the state and the processes and I started talking to our planner and then I brought up a few months ago and it was like, well, let's see if there's appetite for it. Um, but the hardest part is enforcing something because we pretty much have to bait switch somebody by ordering on Airbnb and yeah, it's a whole issue.
So, so to find common ground, because I know councillor disagrees a little bit here, to find common ground, I do think this is something we should revisit. I'm not saying lock it up and throw away the key, I just don't think the time is proper. To act on at this moment.
Before we give the official directives.
My final comment and the ultimate thought for two hundred and fifty is that right now there's no regulation, so if Airbnb, Airbnbs are operating and they likely are. Do you, if you don't see a problem at this point, then doing nothing is not going to harm anything. Uh, to Brandon's comment, the caller coming in, be careful of not letting the tail wag the dog. And then lastly, the issue of parking and parking issues of the existing city. You would have a vehicle to address and look into that issue separately from Airbnb situations. And if we use that as your model to start guiding something that might be done in regulation. That could very easily be something that could be ultimately adopted or extended to Airbnb in the future when it's necessary, so in the meantime, for in the present, you do nothing. You keep a radar on it, send a survey out to him six months, a year, something like that, listen to what citizens, you know, if comments come in, if complaints come in. Or yes, make note of that, uh, look at the parking situation, where is it a problem? How do you go about creating a parking enforcement, uh, model that will work for what's going on in the city right now? Then, give something down the road.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that, I just say, but if you're kicking something down the road and a, a problem occurs where my house is surrounded by four Airbnbs and we decide, and the city decides to regulate and only allow every other house or every fifth house or a certain amount on the street, who are you gonna tell no to when there's no regulations? You don't even know where they're at.
So you'd likely have like a, a permit application process or something like that.
Right, you would need to know where they're at and have a permanent application and then if they're all permitted.
Uh, if they're all permitted, right?
So there is a possibility of a, a problem occurring, that you're gonna have to come up or the council's gonna have to come back and tell somebody you can't be in Airbnb anymore.
Sure.
So I'm hearing there's nothing immediate, uh, that the survey brought for the going, oh my goodness, we've got this problem. And we need to start regulating, but I do hear different viewpoints from council and citizens that don't just kick it down, they're gonna be like, oh, we'll address it later. Um, councillor Paulson, is there a timeframe that to you is acceptable to put this back on agenda? For me personally, I think at least until we fill, we decide what to do with the vacant seats.
I would say within the next three to six months and directing, asking Brandon to look into some possible white regulations, I'm not saying that we have to go fully out and regulating, but I think that there should be something in place, one, to address if there's issues that arise in the moment, not a month or two later down the road, once we can address it after it's been brought to our attention, but two, also to start advertising this essentially to see if it brings in to help the city.
Okay.
Maybe before summer.
Okay, is council okay with putting it on in the beginning, middle of the, I mean, I know. I think anytime we look at the calendar, we keep going.
I'll put it on June.
I would, hear me out. I hope for like February.
Yeah.
And here's why. If we start this process in June and in November, there are six total seats over election year.
We started.
It's just gonna have to start over with the new council. Following that, and that's not productive bracelets.
Yeah. Okay, so can we revisit this in February, whether it's a discussion or action depending on?
I'll put it back as a discussion item in February and, uh, we'll go from there, I'll try to get some, uh.
Councillor Paulson, are you, um, okay if I ask you to think to yourself what some specific things that you might, that jumped out at you?
Yep, and I'll be in conversation with Brandon.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd really like to get some information on communities that have done this successfully, who have a huge Airbnb presence, like Lincoln City, Dundee, see how they. First, and then, and then I, I wanna be really clear on like what type, what different kinds of short term rentals are there and how they will be regulated differently or separately, because a, a house renting rooms is very different than a house being rented. So just making sure they're really clear on how we define them and look at some models that, that, that are working, so we're not just kind of inventing a regulation.
So I guess for all council, anyone that feels compelled to um, give any kind of prompts to, um, Brandon on how to bring this back, let's address it in February. And go from there. Okay. Um, on to department reports, co enforcement reports.
So I was gonna ask, I know, I think I brought this up a few months ago, it seems like we're going to more high level reporting on fire and public works. This is kind of, kind of down to nitty gritty, I mean, I think there's things that we can convey on a high level report. But if, if you just wanna see the cases, I'm okay with that, but I don't know, because I mean, there's a lot of things that Robert does.
I think leave it until we have that discussion.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I'd hate to change it and then have a discussion that then. Um, okay, um, administration.
Uh, outside of that, in your, uh, in the packet, you do see one, uh, one resident concern, um, on the, uh, comment card.
Can we make sure that their name is and address is blacked out next time?
Okay.
Right, I mean, I'm not too worried about the name, but they were, the way these comment cards are, they're supposed to, it's supposed to kind of detach from their bill. But we inadvertently just posted someone's bill. But I appreciate that.
But that was the last thing, that was completely, I mean, I apologize for this. And then, um, also there's the water meter billing update, um, mentioned that the eight eighty lead checks, uh, we consolidated supply, Mueller been on site numerous times. Um, the one I mentioned a few, a little while ago, myself and councillor Gilligan, I'll have got some emails about it, I'll continue to work with that. Um, I'm gonna try to do a couple more things next week, uh, with, with Mueller and consolidated, uh, before reaching out to that resident. Um, city staff will be doing random housing, uh, sampling assignments the third week of October, so our, our next public works, our newest public works employee starts next week. I've already gotten with Chad and the team that we're gonna start picking some addresses and start cold calling them next week to kind of set those up for November. And then all, all August bills are mentally credited as per council direction from the nine fourteen meeting. Uh, then the disconnections will resume by November, so, uh, what is that, November, the weekend, November seventh? So that, the ninth is a Thursday, that's when the forty eight hour notices, well, the forty eight hour notices will go out on Tuesday. The seventh and then the ninth will start to doing the disconnections. Um, there's been a lot of people, um, inquiring about previous deaths. We didn't wanna just start signaling out a debt from August or whatnot or from July, so we just put everybody. It wasn't just this one bill because it was gonna be a lot cleaner, so there's some people who are even benefiting from, they'll shut off from proceeding bills. But we wanna make sure they get cut off because obviously, uh, that, that becomes a financial burden to those who, um, for those.
Brandon, can you include that notice in, in this month's bills?
I'm sorry?
Can you include this notice like in the newsletter?
We can.
Okay.
And for those of you, I can't, I can't remember where the discussion of putting the, a water report, if it was during our council meeting or a conversation, um, I haven't brained in, but I specifically wanted to see something monthly that we could separate and track where we're going with it so that we can easily find it, so that's why some of this might sound redundant, that wasn't enough.
So when you say where we're going with it, can you give me a little more clarity?
Yes, so when we came out of last month's council meeting, it wasn't just a okay, we changed it, here's a resolution that we just adopted, that there were some other concerns that came up. And so this is holding accountable to the change out of the meters, to addressing, um, leaks. The directive of doing this quadrant check, so, um, this report is monthly and a little redundant. But it's so that it's very black and white and a tool for us as a council to use to say, this is how we're holding.
Yeah, it's not gonna be happening like.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all.
And this is the first time this has been brought up with all of council.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
Miss Paulson brought it up to me.
Yeah. Yes.
So with, uh, the cutoffs and stuff that you're talking about, is there a way to put into an investigation like, in my, I, I live at one twenty, uh, West Nineteenth Street, my consumption had been inaccurate for a year. Like the whole winter time, my consumption was four hundred, three hundred, six hundred, four hundred, four hundred twelve. No sprinklers, nothing, that's, that's very inconsistent, then it went to twenty. No sprinklers, nothing. That's, that's very inconsistent. Then it went to twenty-six to twenty-eight to forty-three. I put my sprinklers back on and I just had a bill of fifteen hundred. So there's something wrong. I know you sent me the reports.
Yeah, I I I didn't want to call out my names, but that's what.
No, but I, I, I don't want to pay a bill. I still have a bill of a three hundred dollar water bill after the rates are changed. Which is insane. My water bill is a hundred dollars every month up until the one that was just changed. So I paid the water bill that was due, the one that was the most recent one, but I I find something definitely wrong. And I don't want to have a water cut off their house, but I'm not paying a three hundred dollar water bill.
So what I hear you saying is, is do we have, what's the process for somebody who.
There's no consistency.
Is um disputing their bill.
Right, and I probably should have, I I didn't know, you know, the water rates were low what they were beforehand. I probably, you know, had I been paying attention and seeing it. I would have brought this up much sooner when it went from four hundred to twelve hundred or three hundred to six hundred in the middle of winter. I didn't know you could have a consumption as low as, I thought the minimum was four hundred anyway, but I don't know how that showed up like that on our board. So. We're sorry I was late to the meeting.
No.
Yeah, I'm still working on this, yeah.
So we, I saw your email. Okay, Brandon, I still, we, we'll connect. We're, we're still working. You're, you're. Not, I don't want to seem like I'm doing anything. I mean, I know. You're, you're like the one case, you're like the one case, Brandon, I still scratch your head, try to. Right, because of no consistency. And I know there's other people in our community. I live in the the newer community, the heart, and I lived on sixteen. I I mean, there's other people that are in the same boat, but they're not as proactive, I could say, you know, I tell them, like, want help, you have to reach out, you want to do something. There's a lot of people within our community that that consumption and the rate increase was all the same month and everybody's dropped. Like if I go through the community, I could probably, if I want to get it, I don't know what to do, but everyone's consumption went back to the way it was before him. And they didn't turn their sprinklers off, they didn't change it. Now they're off because it's raining all the time.
No, we'll get together. I started doing some more research. Um, I can't waive you to, I cannot tell you to not pay your bill.
Right.
Um, any type of, any type of waivers that have to come from the city council, I would still pay it. And if something were to come up out of it, then that's a discussion that we would have on if we find something on our end.
Brandon, is that something where he should be coming before council right now, saying I'm disputing my bill?
He can, but at this current moment, I haven't found anything yet that could support that it was a city item. I I I submitted to do all the search on that, so.
I want you guys, what you're doing, and then you still all work with you guys. We don't want to pay that.
And we even got that meter, I mean, we even got the the meter, like calibrate, like we didn't, like we figured everybody else in that. You're the one that's still this weird anomaly. We did find one that had a reverse meter put in, that was put in by a contractor by accident, so it was a reverse rate. Um, so that one was like, oh, that was completely on our fault. So we're finding things. Here's the, here's the last one to crack, and it's kind of, it's been hard.
Because there's no consistency.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna not single you out in a bad way, but it's easy for us to say, okay, you guys are getting it, you're already there. But I want to acknowledge that there might be somebody listening to this going, what about me?
Right.
I just haven't broke up. So the, if someone is still disputing their bill, they do need to speak up.
I'll advise my two neighbors, I have a policy constantly that I have like a sixty-one hundred.
Yeah.
Went out to fifteen hundred, I'm fifty-two hundred, then went back to a fifteen hundred, and they didn't change it. And for what it's worth, we're, we're active. Brandon and I talked on the phone yesterday about. And we're, we're actively. Well, I know your response up to it, so I know that.
Yeah.
It's not gonna get.
Well, and I, I want to acknowledge, I do appreciate Michael, from the first day, you've been communicative with me and sharing. You've even done some research, you know, sharing. Um, so I want to acknowledge that the reason we're saying, oh, we'll get with you, is because you. Did the added effort to come to Brandon and counsel. But if anyone else is having issues, they can't just go, well, once they fix his, they'll fix mine. Each person needs, they shouldn't put that on you. And we're not.
Give them Brandon's email.
Yeah, I think I'm an easygoing guy. I may, I may not make.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, it's not appropriate neighbor to neighbor to let any neighbor speak on your behalf.
You have to go directly, you don't make it official, put it in writing.
So, okay. So that's where the water meter update came, and it might be where there's not much going on one month. But I asked Brandon and I believe um Counselor Paulson was, right this conversation to add it so that we can easily track. Sometimes no, you know, no information is still information while we go through this. It just holds us all accountable that we haven't swept it aside.
And lastly, um, as part of the administrative report, um, some, some of uh more, some new constructions going on in Meadowbrook, you may see, I think we have. Uh, four or five uh foundations down over there, so we're gonna start building out. Next month, I'm gonna be coming up talking about the state's e-permitting system and some community development updates. Um, we did get the manhole cleanouts um done. I know the budget committee and the city council approved uh fifty thousand dollars uh and uh. Eight, we got seven done for like twenty thousand dollars um over the past few months, and those were at Seventh, Eighth, and Lincoln and Dunaway. And then we had Ninth, Eleventh, that grant. So we had seven done. Oh, and then we had Marrow, Marrow and Sixteenth, and Wilson and Twelfth. So.
Yes, I saw that, I think.
So we got seven done um for less than we thought, so we're happy about that. And then, as I mentioned to you all last week, I'm gonna be working with Council President Paulson to meet with Mac Water and Light. From January of twenty twenty-two to September of twenty twenty-three, there was um a mechanism in one of their lower high-flow meters. That wasn't registering consumption properly, we'll figure, and now so we have a twenty thousand dollar bill that we have to pay. And I mentioned to them, well, if we had a mess up on our end, we wouldn't charge a resident that. And their building policies that states the the customer's responsible for our billing practices. So I'm gonna be working with Council President Paulson and one of their board members. Hopefully, maybe we can get this down to a manageable dollar amount because looking at the numbers, it'd be very tight to get this taken care of, so I'll update you all that hopefully the next council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, committee reports, no, there's no committee meeting, right? The end of one Saturday. Um, council reports. Um, I submitted my mayor report. Um, one thing I wanted to touch on real quick because we decided not to put as an action item, um. Speaking of money and being very, you know, are we spending when we don't need to spend? One of the things that was discussed this past month was Christmas time in the city. Um, and that fifteen thousand dollars was spent last year on lighting up the city entries. Um, and because of that, um, LCAT, LDA, um, the PTA, everyone's, all those groups are coming together to try to. See what we can do to cut costs, do things in-house. One of the things that I'm working on is using resources we already have, which is the residents and their beautiful decorations. So um, working in tangent with as a suggestion from Brandon, Lafayette's going to have a Christmas decorating contest. Originally, he had suggested to put it on so that council could pick a, maybe give a credit on the water bill or whatnot, and I said that, that I didn't support that. Because that just looks like we have extra money in the water bill. Um, so we will do some sort of small, non-denominational or non-monetary prize.
Maybe.
I was just about to say, um, Dollar General's on my list, although I know that that manager, it's out of his pocket. But I would like to ask council, if you want to be a judge, we can't participate in it, so it'd be a fun way. Um, so and any other ways that anyone in the city wants to brainstorm how we can, I think, the this year of Christmas. And celebrating what we have as a small community, as is more important than ever, without spending the fifteen thousand dollars on professional lighting. Um, but that is, so a decorating contest will be happening. Um, but if council wants to participate, you can join me. If not, I will find other judges and we'll work, but it's just gonna be good old holiday fun.
Is this each tree in the park?
With the fifteen thou, no, so the contest will be your, your yard, like your own personal house. So there's like three categories, like Griswold, which is the most, you know, a lighting one, a yard, oh, Chris, I forget what the three categories, so I don't have to type. So anyway, I could ramble on all night because I love Christmas, but it's us using very minimal money to encourage everyone else to do it. Um, other groups are, one of the things that we've decided is to invite people to hang a water or weather-appropriate ornament on the Christmas tree that goes in the gazebo. You know, put your family name on it if you want, if it's a big bell, plastic golden bell tree, whatnot, if you think they're gonna come rolling out. Chief already mentioned that. He's working with his crew. I did want to support and let you guys know that. I acknowledged, and so did the rest of the group, that the fire department put together that parade during COVID and wanted to make sure that. If they wanted to do it, to do it, if not, we'll support something else, but I just wanted in my report to share about the decorating contest. And that I am committed to making sure that we're not frivolously spending for Christmas.
So just email you if.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll send out the donations to you guys. I didn't have anything because I thought we were gonna present it to you guys because I was gonna need council's approval to pick a prize. But we're gonna try to make it a donation, and I was against the idea of a water bill credit because that's just. Yeah, like that just, yeah, like I get that's an easy way to, you know, get money in pockets, but anyway, so I ramble. So, yeah, um, so I'm ready for a motion to adjourn if someone wants to adjourn.
Um, I just wanted to make a quick mention, the Lafayette Downtown Association is holding a community workshop this upcoming. Wednesday, October eighteenth at the Community Center, beginning at five thirty PM, which is open to the public, and we encourage citizens to come over and be part of that.
Yes, and LCAT is hosting our Harvest Festival Saturday. I encourage council to. Even if you don't have kiddos, to come say hi.
We'll be there with table, the city will be there with.
Wonderful.
Wonderful, thank you.
Fight contest. I'll be back from, I get to be a judge.
You want us to do Christmas decorations, but I'm fine.
Because I can, why? I was asked to judge the pies. You can relate to the decorations that we want, but anyway. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm excited that LCAT, yeah, so there's indoor and outdoor, but LCAT's. Not going all out, but they're going all out, and I'm excited to be back, and I guess before we go to German, I appreciate the meeting tonight, and. I'm enjoying my time down at the LOC conference. I'll share with you guys about.
In there.
Yeah.
Did, did the chief say when the Phil the boot is gonna?
It's giving him next year, I think.
They go before we spring it.
Yeah, yeah, it's one of the, I I talked to some of them, so I do know that it is something that they can schedule whenever they want. There is some online stuff, so it's.
That would be like a Christmas time. Not the right time of year.
They're already working on the toy drive-in, talking about how many we have that stuff. So anyway, I'm be supportive of our fire department and.
All right.
So.
But I move to adjourn.
It's a move.
I'll second it.
Hey, all in favor?
I.
Hey, host, turn.